Welcome to the Candidate Forum Community Unit High School District 200 School Board, sponsored by the League of Women Voters. My name is Barb Lyman, a member of the League of Women Voters of Wheaton and your moderator for this evening. I do live in West Chicago, so I will not be voting for any of the candidates participating in the forums this evening. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that neither supports nor opposes candidates or parties for any office. The League's purpose is to promote civic responsibility through the informed and active participation of citizens in government and civil civic discourse. Providing forums is a major mission of the League of Women Voters, so citizens can become better informed about the issues facing their community and to become better acquainted with the candidates running for office. The forum tonight is a candidate forum and not a debate. Candidates are expected to accurately represent the facts and their responses reflect their own views and opinions. The candidates have agreed to abide by the rules set forth prior to this forum. All candidates attending tonight have signed and returned the ground rules by the deadline established in the invitation. These rules specify the format, time limits, broadcasting of the forum, and other rules related to the conduct of the forum. The candidates will begin in alphabetical order with their one-minute opening statements. They then will alternate the order in which they answer questions for one minute. After the question portion of the forum, each candidate will give a one-minute closing statement. Members of the League will be acting as timers and will enforce the time limits. Should a candidate exceed the time limit, I will ask them to finish their sentence and move on to the next candidate. We have received a multitude of questions from the community in advance of tonight's forum. To ensure that questions represent a balance of topics, a panel of experienced members of the League of Women Voters have reviewed the questions submitted for appropriateness, applicable to all candidates, and to avoid duplication. We will do our best to read each question asked within the timeframe allotted for tonight's forum. We are grateful to those in the community who have taken the time to learn more about the candidates before casting their vote by attending or watching candidate forums. For those in attendance this evening, we ask that you listen attentively, turn off your phones and electronic devices, avoid commenting or disrupting others during the forum, and refrain from applause until the end of the forum. Finally, I want to say how appreciative we are for District 200, for the candidates who are running for office for District 200 and who have agreed to serve and be here tonight to share your ideas and goals. So let us get started to hear from the candidates for District 200 School Board. Angela Blatner, Katie Ebbison, Amy Erkinswick, Brooke Gennaro, Sarah Paver, and John Rutledge. Candidate Ron Henlund regrettably has a work obligation and is unable to attend tonight's forum. Candidate Blatner, you have one minute for your opening statement.
Thank you, Ms. Lyman. Oh, my microphone works. So I currently serve on the Board of Education right now. My mic doesn't always work, so that's why it's nice to check. I'm a little skeptical, but I can introduce myself in 60 seconds or less, so here I go. My husband and I have lived in Wheaton for almost 30 years, which tells you a little bit about how old I am. We have four children. Three of our children have graduated from the district, and our fourth youngest is still a student in the district. The driving force of why I serve on the board, the sole reason that I'm here, is to work towards making sure that every student has a successful academic and student experience. A little about my work life. I work as a pediatric physical therapist in early intervention, so I bring a background of child neurology and child development, and I do bring that lens to my board work. I will always advocate for children and their families, and I respect the amazing educators of our district. I will yield to Katie.
Candidate Ebbison, you have one minute for your opening statement.
Hi, thank you, everybody, for coming. My name is Katie Ebbison. I am a longtime resident of Warrenville. I'm an attorney, and I'm the mom of four kids that are in the district. And primarily, I'm a champion for public education. I'm running because I saw a need, and I want to use my background, my experience, and my skills to serve this community that I love so much. There's currently no board member from Warrenville, and there hasn't been one in over 12 years. All of our kids go to District 200 schools, and we make up a large portion of the district, and it's important to me to have that voice on the board. Professionally, I'm a transactional attorney, and I work in finance and fund management. I have an understanding of financial matters, budget concerns, tax, and investment strategies, and I am especially interested in using my knowledge to maximize the efficiency of our tax dollars and protect our property values. I'm deeply committed to working collaboratively with all stakeholders to effectively govern the school district and ensure that all of our students are given a solid foundation and an excellent education.
Thank you. Candidate Erkinswick, your opening statement.
Hi, thank you so much. I'm Amy Erkinswick. I have worked in Wheaton for 15 years. I've been a resident of Wheaton for over 11 years. I have five CUSD 200-educated children, and I myself am a proud product of public education. I've served in CUSD 200 as a room parent, as a PTA member, as a member of Principal Interview Committee, and I now serve currently on the Citizens Advisory Committee to the Board. Throughout the community, I give of my time and talents to various philanthropic and nonprofit organizations, including Doodlebug Workshop, the Lions Club of Wheaton, and 100 Women Who Care, and I also serve as a precinct committeeman for Milton Township. I'm running for a seat on the Board of Education because I'm passionate about volunteerism, and I'm passionate about serving our community, and I think this would be a great way to do it. I believe in creating a positive impact for every student, family, and taxpayer. I believe that CUSD 200 will benefit from my strong voice, my willingness to challenge the status quo, and my commitment to listening deeply to the concerns of community members. I am a person who believes there's always room for growth, and I'm committed to continuous improvement in pursuit of shared goals.
Thank you. Candidate Gennaro, your opening statement.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. My name is Brooke Gennaro. I have been living in this area for 17 years, originally unincorporated Wheaton, and I now am unincorporated Winfield Township with a Wheaton address. We all know how these zip codes and neighborhoods get drawn in all sorts of ways. I have been engaged in District 200 since my oldest started kindergarten. He is currently a middle schooler in sixth grade. My daughter is an elementary-age kid. She's in fourth grade. I majored in political science and sociology. I focused on governance and societal structures, which I think really has interested me in this position, because it seems like a natural transition into community service. I've worked in corporate America in legal research. I co-own and manage a real estate investment firm. I'm running because I believe a strong school board needs diverse voices, someone that is not tied to political agendas, legacy incumbents. I believe that we must always strive to do better, and I saw an opportunity for that here.
Thank you so much. Candidate Paver, your opening statement.
Thanks to the League for hosting us, and thank you to everyone for being here. My name is Sarah Paver, and I am a proud product of public education, starting right here in District 200. I grew up in Warrenville and attended Bauer, Hubble, and Wheaton-Warnville South. I am the fourth generation of the Paver family to be educated in our community schools. I have a PhD in ecology, and my professional background is in academic research. I live in Wheaton with my husband and two sons, a preschooler at Jefferson, and a first grader at Hawthorne. I am on the Citizens Advisory Committee, the newly-formed Special Education Parents Advisory Council, the PTAs at Jefferson and Hawthorne, and I co-organize the Jets and Java Community Playdates at Jefferson. As a former student, I experienced the excellence of our community schools firsthand. As a parent, I have watched my seven-year-old slip through the cracks. I am running for school board in District 200 because I want an inclusive future where all students have access to high-quality education, feel safe at school, and all students experience belonging in their school communities. Thank you.
And candidate Rutledge.
I'm John Rutledge. My late wife and I moved here in 1971 and sent our son to Lowell, Edison, and Central, K through 12. I was widowed in 2018, and I have since remarried Betty with her late husband, sent their three kids through District 200, K through 12. One settled in Wheaton, and they've sent their two kids to District 200 again, K through 12. I've served on the Board the past two years. I served on the Wheaton City Council 10 years, 2011 to 2021. I've served as program chair for our Rotary Club for almost 10 years, raised funds for Rotary scholarships, served as scoutmaster, been on church boards, and volunteered and supported activities in several of our different District 200 schools. I've served as a board member and president of several local and international professional organizations, strong supporter of public education, and I know of no other way to give every kid a chance at a good life. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Ebbison, we'll begin the first question with you. What do you see as the current challenges facing public education in our state and in Wheaton?
That's a great question. So currently, I think one of the biggest challenges in our community is making sure that we're insulating our community from anything that's going on on a state level or a federal level that may, you know, be a little bit chaotic. You know, we're not really sure what's going to be coming down the pipeline in the next couple of years, and it's really important to protect the integrity of our local community from the ramifications of that. For example, if the Department of Education cuts its funding, you know, we want to be able to rearrange things in the kitchen on a budgetary level so that those kids, specifically the special education kids, don't, you know, lose their funding for things. So I think that the biggest challenge in the next four years is going to be, you know, creating an environment that's a little bit of a bubble, so that we are making sure that, you know, we're not being overreactionary, and we're not, you know, pendulum shifting back and forth too much, but that we continue to keep our district running strongly and smoothly and keep the integrity of our community.
Thank you. Candidate Erkinswick.
Thank you so much. Current challenges in terms of here in CUSD 200, something that I would really like to see improved upon would be safety and security. I think we all are living in a time where we're sort of unsure often about whether or not we are safe and feeling secure based on a number of things. So something that I would like to see happen locally would be increased security measures. I'd like to see improvements on teacher safety scores throughout our district, because those tend to be relatively low, and I think every teacher deserves to feel safe at school as well as the students. From a statewide position, in terms of, you know, what's going on with the Department of Education, I think what we need to do is sort of just be cognizant of what's going on, and I believe that with a board well-placed, committed to collaboration, any protections that are offered at the federal level would otherwise be offered and picked up by either the state or the local school board, so.
Thank you. Candidate Gennaro.
Yes, so at more of a widespread state level, I think that there's a lot of uncertainties just kind of floating out around there right now. School vouchers is one of those. This is becoming more and more of a topic. We need to be preparing that if the state were to move in that direction, that we would be adequately equipped to figure out what that would look like for our district going forward. The Department of Education is another issue. Department of Education does not set curriculum guidance. It doesn't employ any one particular teacher in one school. It's relatively low in what we get from it funding-wise. What I'm thinking about for our district very specifically is proficiency rates. We only have a 61% proficiency rate for everyone in the district for ELA, and math is a 48% efficiency rate within the district.
Candidate Paver.
All right, well, these are great ideas brought up by my fellow candidates. I am especially cognizant of the ability, I guess, of our local politics to insulate our community from what's going on and other levels. I think what I would add to what's been said is one of our big challenges is enabling our educators to meet the needs of all of our learners, so that everyone is able to access high-quality education. I feel like we have done a good job in investing in differentiated education and starting to provide trainings on universal design for learning. I feel like we could go a step further by implementing more inclusive practices in our schools. Inclusive settings allow educators to provide more frequent and individualized support for all of our students, which improves the quality of education for everyone.
Thank you. And candidate Rutledge.
Yes, we can spend a lot of time worrying about what's going on in Washington and Springfield and speculating about how that's all going to come out. Meanwhile, our finances are very strong. I think we've got a good shock absorber to deal with whatever changes may come at us, and we're in a good position to adapt and adjust, so I don't worry too much about that. I do worry about within our own district here maintaining our properties, our buildings, and we've got a big project coming up with the middle schools. We're attempting to compress that down to two years instead of three to save some construction costs on just the overhead of construction projects. So I feel good about where we are, and I'm not worried about what may come at us from elsewhere, because we don't know what it's going to be, and we can spend a lot of time and energy worrying. Thank you.
And candidate Blatner, your final thoughts on this subject.
Thank you. I'd like to agree with John. I feel that the district has some room for absorption if anything were to happen at the federal level. However, just to provide some peace to those who may be worrying about that, we currently, our district receives about $7 million from the federal government, and while that's not insignificant, let's say about $5 million of that comes from IDEA funding, and I feel like regardless of what happens at the national level, IDEA funding will continue. Then there's about $1 million from Title I grants, and then another $1 million from other grants. All to say that we maintain a fund balance, so that if we were to suddenly have a loss of significant funds, which is about 5% of our gross revenues, we would have time to carefully and deliberately make adjustments. We wouldn't be forced into some very quick and haphazard decision-making, cutting and slashing in the very worst-case scenario. Okay? Thank you.
Well, I'll let you finish, because I don't know that we want to end on the worst-case scenario.
The worst-case scenario, if we lost $7 million in our fund balance, which is very healthy, so it really isn't the worst-case scenario, we also do have $7.2 million that we set aside each year for capital improvement projects, so we also have that cushion that we wouldn't have to make any rash decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we all feel better now.
Thank you, me too.
The next question will begin with candidate Erkinswick. It's a two-part question, and so at any time, candidates, please feel free to ask me to repeat a question should you need to do, should you need it. So here's the question. What do you see as the primary role of a school board member? What skills or traits will allow you to contribute to the effective operations of the board as a whole?
So primary role and my skills, is that?
Right.
Okay, great, thank you. So primary role, I mean, there are several, right? So the Board of Education is responsible for casting the vision of the district. It's responsible for setting goals and measuring them, responsible for providing leadership, hiring and evaluating the superintendent, of course, reviewing and approving curriculum, enact policy and procedures, and certainly to act as a fiduciary to the taxpayers. One point that I find particularly in need of improvement is that I believe the Board of Education should also serve as a liaison for communication between the community and district leadership. So I would like to think that my ability to have relational skills and my communication skills and my desire to serve would serve really well in that capacity, because I'm very interested in hearing and listening to all community members and working towards making this the best district it can possibly be.
Thank you. Candidate Gennaro.
As far as some of the goals of the board, one of the things that I think about the most is that we need to ensure that we're approving frameworks and materials that are aligning with what the state tells us we need to be doing from a curriculum standpoint. Certainly, the day-to-day and who's referring those materials, I think, should be the educators. They're the experts, but it is the board's job to make sure that we're just aligning to state guidelines. Budgeting, of course, is another one. You know, we're sitting on these costly middle school improvements. We never sent that job out for any additional bids, only one bid. Professionally, I am very familiar with getting quotes for large capital projects. That's definitely an area that I believe I could bring a lot to the table, too. I also think that another job is just maintaining good congeniality. I served in the Citizens Advisory Council for five years. I was voted, elected vice chair for several of those years by other members in the committee, which I like to think that they thought I was doing a good job.
Candidate Paver.
All right, so I think that the role of the board has been well-articulated. I definitely, as far as, I don't know about, it's hard to say which role is a primary one, but I think setting vision and goals stands out as being something that everything else follows after. As far as skills or traits, I think I bring the perspective of a scientist, which is not always, which you don't frequently see necessarily. I learn new things quickly. I think logically. I problem-solve creatively, and I take pride in my ability to change my position on a topic when presented with new information. I think I also am good at listening to people's concerns and trying to consider how we might go about solving them.
Great, thank you. Candidate Rutledge.
I've commented that I feel like I've got a little bit of home-court advantage. I sat right in this very spot for about 10 years, attending about 450 school board meetings, or city council meetings, which is a governance role just like the school board. The job is to select somebody, in this case, the superintendent, who is capable of running things, and then our job is to ask questions to see that the proper processes have been followed, to come up with the recommendations. It's not the board's job to tell the superintendent what to do. If we have to do that, we have the wrong superintendent. We don't pick curriculum. We have experts to do that kind of thing that serve in administration. I would comment in terms of the construction work, the individual contracts are going out for bid. This is not a one-bid or no-bid situation. It's going to be bid, and we think that we can probably even cut some costs on that. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate Blatner.
Thank you. Again, I'll agree with John that the role of the board is governance. However, I do take a little bit of a different perspective. I think our constituents expect us to ask questions, and I think asking questions and being curious is a good thing, and even challenging is healthy. I've demonstrated the ability to ask tough questions and to seek answers, because I feel like if I have a question, I'm sure members of the community have a question. Having said that, I've learned a lot from my fellow board members about the importance of process. When we have a process in place and we are focused on outcomes, those together can yield success. I tend to be very outcomes-driven and looking for, I don't, you know, personally, like, don't care how we get there, let's just get there, but it has been very enlightening and good for me to recognize the importance of process. Thank you.
And candidate Ebbison.
So I would echo everything that John and Angela have said regarding what it means to be a board member. The board's role is in governance. We are one, I would be one voice out of seven, so it's a collaborative effort. I'm an extremely collaborative person, and I believe that the best ideas come from a wide variety of opinions and a wide input from everybody. A board member's job is to talk to the stakeholders, listen to the experts, the curriculum experts, the superintendent, the administration, listen to public comment, do the research, and then ultimately vote what they consider in the best interest of a child. You know, as an attorney, I'm able to work with multiple parties, often competing parties, to get a deal done, and I would bring those skills to the board.
Thank you. The next question will begin with candidate Gennaro. And the question is this. Why should I, why should this election be important to me? I don't have kids in the district, and I don't own property in the district.
That's a great question. I think that when we look at what our community is actually made up of, we have a lot of residents who do not have kids in the district or children who are the age to go to school, period. A good school system attracts a lot of things that are good for our community as a whole. If our schools are not doing well, no one in Wheaton is going to be doing well. And whether you own property or not, that's even from a general congeniality standpoint and various other things. I think that we are sitting on the crux of watching a lot of money be spent on schools, which there were some major updates needed, but we can't just hand this money over, knowing that our current middle school, which is the newest, is the lowest academic performing in the district. So we need to be voting people in who are going to be very mindful of how what's going on in the inside, other than walls and new paint, is handled, giving our kids the best education that we possibly can.
Candidate Paver.
Yes, this is a really good question, and I think part of the importance of a school board, even if your kids aren't going to the schools, is that these children become the future of your community. One thing that I've noticed as I have participated in these schools as a parent is that a lot of people that I went to school with stay in this community. So the everybody that you, or not everybody, but I would say a lot of the character of this community is very much homegrown, and then these children that come up in our school system go on to participate in the democratic process, serve on city council, and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, so it affects you in many ways.
Candidate Rutledge.
Yes, the public education system takes care of all of our kids that are the future of the country. I may not have kids in school right now. I don't. I have had, but just as I haven't been before the judge over at the courthouse, I'm glad that the court system is there. We need roads, we need fire departments, we need police departments, and we need public education at a high level, which we have, and this is just good for our society, to prepare the children of our community to go out into the world and be successful.
Thank you. Candidate Blatner.
And I'll just piggyback on what John said there. I think if you live in this community, even if you don't have children, you're part of the community, you're part of society, and one of the basic foundations of our country is that we educate the future leaders of our country, the future citizens of our country, and that is something that I embrace, and I hope that everyone who is here embraces as well.
And candidate Ebbison.
I don't think I can come up with a better answer than Dr. Paver. I really, I second everything that she said. We have a wonderful community, and we are raising our children, you know, not just parents but teachers, and as a community. And a lot of our children go off into the world, and then they come back here, and they become teachers, and they become police officers, and they become members of this community, and it makes this community so rich. I would also add that I am really impressed by the cross-governmental bodies that, you know, we work together with. So the Wheaton-Warnville Public School District works really closely with the Wheaton Park Districts and the Warrenville Park Districts and other municipal bodies, and I think that that's really positive for our community as a whole. There are a lot of events, school events, community events, that everybody can go to, regardless of whether you have children in the district or are a property owner. So I think having a very rich community and school is just a net benefit for the community at large.
Candidate Erkinswick.
Thank you. It's tough to go last on this one, because everyone's made great points. Of course, it's very much about culture, right? Our public schools are the heartbeat of our community, and they drive business and growth also. They attract people to our community, and they attract businesses, and they obviously increase home values with their ratings. But even if someone is a community member but isn't a property owner, renters even absorb the cost of property taxes as well through their rent payments. So they still should have a voice, they still matter, and they should still absolutely care about who their leaders are, because I believe that our leaders set the tone of our culture and our communities.
Thank you. The next question will begin with candidate Paver. And we've had, you've all kind of touched on this subject, but we've had multiple questions regarding this. What is the role of the school board in setting and monitoring curriculum?
All right, so we have a pretty robust policy on setting and monitoring curriculum, and throughout the process, there are opportunities for board members to give feedback, for community members to give feedback. What is the role of the board member? I feel like the role is mostly to participate in the process, ask the questions that the community wants asked that we have, or that board members have, and in the end, I think that it's good to rely on the professional expertise of educators to the extent possible.
Thank you. Candidate Rutledge.
Yes, so we have a terrific leader of our curriculum effort in Melissa Murphy. Just last night, she gave a presentation to the board on reading, and the state does periodic testing, but we don't get the results for months after that. So the school board administration has adopted a system called FastBridge. We get several tests a year, and the results are almost instantaneous. That gives us the opportunity to see what's working and what's not working, so that we can intervene when something isn't working. I think we are served very well by the administration bringing proposals to the board with a recommendation for approval, and if we ask, okay, what other things did you consider? What can you do if this goes wrong? I think we've been very well-served by the curriculum that they have put together for us.
Thank you. Thank you. Candidate Blatner.
Thank you. I think this question is simply answered by going again and saying that there's a process. There's a process by which curriculum is chosen, piloted, and ultimately put in place. The school board requires that the process be followed. We seek community input, and we are responsible for approving the final selections. The board receives feedback along the way, from development to implementation, and has the opportunity to ask questions, as well as to offer input.
Candidate Ebson.
As a board member, it wouldn't be up to me personally to determine any specific curriculum that are available to students. And when the board is tasked as a whole with voting and approving on materials, the role I would play is in educating myself, doing the research, talking to the district stakeholders, listening to public comment, and then ultimately relying on that research and those experts to guide my vote. You know, we have a team of very excellent people in this district, and I am encouraged by the latest updates to the curriculum, to get the curriculum in line with the latest science of learning. And I'm also encouraged by the new curriculum that creates a uniform curriculum across all elementary schools and across all middle schools, so it doesn't matter which part of the district you live in, every student has access to the same curriculum. So I would be supportive of curriculum changes in line with that.
Candidate Erkinswick.
Thank you. I love that you mentioned the move back to the science of reading, because that, I think, is really important and is very much responsible for our ELA proficiency increases in the last couple of years. Curriculum development and content in our district here is regulated by Board Policies 640 and 660, undergoes a discretionary review process, piloting, and is recommended then to the board by the superintendent. It's the Board of Education's responsibility to review it, to learn and understand it, to gain insight, post for public review, receive and provide feedback and challenges, and ultimately approve the curriculum as presented.
Thank you. And candidate Gennaro.
I'm one of the ones that spoke on this a little bit earlier. So I believe that district leaders and educators should lead our decisions about the actual instructional material being selected. As I said earlier, it's the board's position that they should be overseeing the frameworks, making sure that we're aligning with state standards. Something I think a lot of parents, community members, are not aware of is there is a parental or community review process, where once we're looking to have something approved at a certain point, you can come in and view those materials. I think it's important to take advantage of something like that. Mr. Rutledge mentioned FastBridge. That is something the district does. The state of Illinois does not recognize it. I think it is equally as important to also look at our IAR scores, because it is actually what the state measures us by and holds us to. We should let overall the educators lead the curriculum to process. I am not an educator, I'm not going to pretend to be one, and as long as we continue to hire good talent, we can trust that this is going to be taking place.
To dig down a little bit deeper into curriculum, we had a question, and we'll begin with Mr. Rutledge. How does and should the school district prepare students for a digital world? What responsibility do they have to be, being sure students are taught the importance of digital citizenship?
Jason Spencer leads that effort for us, and you're getting pretty deep into the weeds there, as I see it, but certainly that's where we have to be in terms of artificial intelligence. I can recall when calculators came along, and we were very concerned that the kids wouldn't learn how to do their multiplication tables because they had calculators. We're now worried about them doing their papers with artificial intelligence. Well, it's a tool that they need to learn how to use, and I think we're on track adjusting and adapting to using digital tools, because that's the future. That's what they're going to have to deal with when they get out into the world.
Thank you. Candidate Blatner.
Can you repeat the question, please?
How does and should the school district prepare students for a digital world? What responsibility does the school district have to be sure students are taught the importance of digital citizenship?
Thank you. I think it's vitally important that we teach our students safety with the use of technology. I have concerns with artificial intelligence. I know that we're addressing those in our district. Unfortunately, it's here, so we do have to deal with it. I think about, most importantly, we need to teach our students to be cautious and staff, to be cautious with sharing information. In terms of using technology, I feel like our students come to us, and because of the world they live in, they're going to be exposed to technology. I would like to maybe see a little less of it in our classrooms, because I feel our students are pretty competent in with saying that, you know, some basic technology classes at each level is appropriate, but our reliance on technology is something I would like less of. However, as Ms. Ebson points out, I'm one of seven, and so, and I also love hearing community feedback and input.
Candidate Ebson.
So this is a loaded question. I feel like we could spend all night just talking about cell phones, and AI, and technology, and digital literacy. We are really in the technological revolution, and phones aren't going anywhere, AI is not going anywhere, computers aren't going anywhere, and all of our kids are way better at it than we are. So, you know, it's a little scary, and, you know, I'm part of the Citizens Advisory Committee to the school board right now, and we have been spending the last couple of months looking at our cellphone policy for the district, seeing if maybe we should change a few things here and there. And even within our group, there are so many varied opinions. People that think we should ban cell phones bell-to-bell, people that think, well, the kids that think they should have them all the time, no matter what, you know, and somewhere in between. So it's really important to develop a policy for cellphone use and other technology use that's uniform across the district, that is enforced on a level, I think, maybe higher than the teachers, in order to give them the support that they need, so it's not the teachers being the bad guys. But I also think, oh, sorry, if I could just finish one thing, sorry. I also think it's important to teach our kids how to use this well, you know, safety, you know, not sending photos, not getting involved in scams, you know, being able to be digitally literate.
Thank you. Candidate Erkinswick.
Thank you. It's tough to add anything, because everyone's made really great points. I just wanted to kind of touch a little bit on, again, CAC is doing a lot of work and having a lot of conversations around this, talking with students, talking with educators about perspectives on things like one-to-one technology devices, cellphone policies, AI policies. So I think already the district is doing a lot of good work, having these conversations, and bringing parents into it, which is super important, of course. Certainly, by the time our kiddos graduate from our high schools, media literacy needs to be something that's been a huge focus, and by the time that we send them off, we need them to be feeling independent, we need them to be feeling like they have a good control over appropriate use of technology and media, and making sure that they have learned how to do it independently and constructively. So I would like to just see more of that work going on, and see more partnering with parents. We've got, we've had things in the past where, like, Rich Wastaki would come and give talks about media literacy and safety on the internet, so more of that, and really just arming our kids with the independence to learn how to take care of themselves.
Thank you. Candidate Gennaro.
We've heard a lot about the student side. Something I think that's equally as important to address is administration and the board side. There is a document called the Ethical Use Document that the district has, and it has some questions, kind of leaves me personally with some more answers. And there's two things that are important for people to know about. There is SOPA, the Student Online Personal Protection Act, and there is FERPA, the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act. One of these is a state law keeping us from making sure we're not selling data from students to tech companies. The other one is a federal law governing student education records. We need to make sure that all of our disciplinary files, any kind of a health file, any kind of an academic student record, is being kept under lock and key. Our new ELA curriculum that was just approved has an AI grading piece that's going to be used in middle school. I think that we need to tread lightly on that one, because if we're allowing teachers to use that for grading, and I grew up in Scantron, I think there's a time and a place for this, but we are now opening a door where we cannot ask our students to avoid using it for certain work as well.
And candidate Paver.
All right, well, this is very hard to add to. You all brought up very great points. I would echo Ms. Blatner's perspective about caution. When thinking about technology, some of the first things that come to my mind is our responsibility to teach kids about managing their digital footprint. I know that there, in the past, there have been cyberbullying with students posting inappropriate images to Instagram. Like, we need to give students a good perspective on why that is not okay. And also, I think it's important for them to be able to ask themselves, how do you know? In the world of AI, where you could see an image or a video that could look like anything is happening, I think we really need to give our students a sound grounding in how to figure out what is real, what is true, what they can believe.
Thank you. Candidate Blatner, we'll begin with you. This is a more digging-deep question about curriculum. What is your position regarding book banning?
Thank you for this question. So I served on the board two years ago, and we had two book challenges come to us. When the first one came to us, my biggest concern was that parents have an opt-out option, and after the challenge, that was something that the district had put in place. Also, after the second challenge, we re-looked at our procedure that curates and puts books into our libraries, and added an extra layer of oversight, and I feel like we have two good procedures and policies in place.
Candidate Ebson.
What is my thought on book banning? Man, so I think we need to tread lightly here, because we don't want to be the people that ban the books, or burn the books, or put the books under lock and key so people can't be educated. I think more than censorship, we need to teach students how to read responsibly, teach them how to analyze what they're reading, and, you know, the same thing for educators and parents alike, is, you know, instead of being informed on something by your fear, by saying, I don't like this book, this is scary, or this is vulgar, you know, you really have to dig a little bit deeper and recognize that that book may be important for a student, for their mental health, or for them to feel like they belong to something. So, you know, I think you have to come at it not from a sense of fear, but a sense of, you know, what's going to be the best outcome for the community as a whole.
Candidate Erkinswick.
Thank you. What is my position on book banning? I do not believe in it. I have always stood by the personal position that the materials that we offer our children within the walls of our schools should be age-appropriate, and so when it comes to things like books in libraries, or curriculum, or anything that is being offered, or presented, or available to our children, I believe very, very strongly that something that's aged, or rated perhaps 18-plus or mature, has no business being in the hands of a 13-, 14-year-old. That's something for parents to decide.
And candidate Gennaro.
I will echo a little bit what candidate Erkinswick just said about the age appropriateness. When my son was in kindergarten, he had brought me home a book about bugs, and he started asking about why bugs feel certain ways, and I didn't really know what he was talking about. And I started reading the book, and I was like, oh, wow. And so I emailed the librarian, and she was like, that actually is supposed to be in a middle school, and not in an elementary school. It was great, it was fine. The book went on its way to where it belonged. I think that the opt-out option is important, because if a parent wants to exercise that right, it should be there for them. I also think that our kids should just know, and we should be putting values in them in our own homes, what we think is right for them and not right, and hope that that will help guide some of their selections in the schools.
Candidate Paver.
Well, right. I cannot identify a single incidence of book banning that has been on the right side of history, so, like everyone else, I am not pro-book banning. I think it's good for our students to have access to diverse material. I echo Ms. Ebson that it's important for us to teach our children to read and consume the media responsibly. I agree that we should make sure that the books are in the correct level library, that would be very scary. But I also think that it's important to challenge our high schoolers, because they're going to be adults very soon, and when they are at home with their parents, it's a safer way for them to kind of challenge, or like, learn about complex ideas than when they are away at college, I think. So that's one thing I think about.
Candidate Rutledge.
I think it's important to look to the professionals, the librarians, the child psychologists, and the others that make recommendations as to, generally speaking, what's appropriate at different age levels for the kids, and then make that available to them. And if the parents feel that that's not appropriate for their child, they have that opportunity to opt out. But I have encountered parents that have said this particular book was really important to my child, or would have been 25 years ago if it was available. So I don't know that we want to be in a position of keeping things out of the library, if it's age-appropriate, as determined by people that are smarter than I am at it.
Thank you. The next question is even more specific, and it's this: Would you be supportive of B-level sports coming back to the middle school?
This is actually a great question, and I feel very passionate about it. I would be extremely supportive of B-sports coming back to the middle schools. I think it's a shame that sports turn competitive so early, and like, on the middle school level, if you don't make the middle school basketball team in the seventh grade, then, you know, that's it. There's no, there's no B-team, there's rec, but the rec league ends in high school, and then you're not going to try out for the high school team. And a lot of these kids haven't really reached puberty yet, they haven't really reached their full potential of athletic prowess. So I think it would be really important to offer B-sports for kids. It's so important for kids to be part of a team, to play team sports, to learn how to lose, to learn how to be good teammates, and I think the more that we can encourage kids to be part of a team using sports, the better. I would also be supportive of, you know, bringing maybe a rec league to high school students for the same reason, so they don't have to play competitively in high school, but they can still be active and play as part of a team, or, you know, encouraging more participation in intramurals.
Candidate Erkinswick.
Thank you. This is an easy one, for sure. Yeah, if it's doable, if we have the coaches and the educators available to support hosting something like that, absolutely. The more kids that can be included, the better, and I think it will make every kiddo feel like they've got a place there, so, absolutely.
Candidate Gennaro.
Another yes. I see how well clubs go over at the middle school level. That's been one of the things I've been really thrilled with, watching my child enter that arena for the first time, and I think that there are a lot of kids out there, at this age especially, that still want to play because they like it, not because they're looking for a college recruiter. And this would give us a great opportunity, I think, also from just a social standpoint, a networking standpoint. Maybe you're meeting new friends, and they're at the same school at you, and that's a little different from Park District, because you might not meet the same people that you get to hang out with in classes. I really do not see any downside to it at all.
Candidate Paver.
All right. Very hard to add to that, as Ms. Ebson knocked it out of the park. So my understanding, oh, so my understanding is that B-level sports are incredibly popular, and everyone wants to see them come back. They were lost to budget cuts, and the expectation was that they would be taken over by the Park District, but I don't think anyone feels like that need has been met in that way. The one, one aspect that maybe I can add to what's been said, is that another aspect of allowing more of our students to engage in sports is it gives them more access to having a meaningful relationship with a caring adult. So I see no downsides, other than the needing to find a space for it in the budget.
Candidate Rutledge.
We've seen that involvement in activities outside of the classroom leads to higher test scores, better learning, better emotional and social growth, so I'm all in favor of anything we can do to keep the kids interested and involved. I learned how to diagram a sentence back in high school. I did it by myself with a teacher. I haven't had to do that since then, but in basketball and in band, I learned how to do what I needed to do there with other people, and that's kind of what life is all about, working with other people. School is learning how to learn, and if you learn how to put together a musical or a football play, that's learning, and it's practicing learning. So I'm in favor of everything we can do to keep the kids involved in any activities possible.
Thank you. And candidate Blatner.
Absolutely. Can't imagine coming to me and saying no. Absolutely. Sports are so incredibly important, as John and everyone else has alluded to. In 2008, it was when there was issues with state funding, and the cuts came to eliminate the B-sports going to the Park District. I think it's time to revisit. And just to point out, in 2008, the board at that time had the board at that time had to react to a situation and didn't quite have the cushion that we now have if we have to react to a similar situation in the future. Just wanted to put that in there. But absolutely, I would be all in support of bringing back B-sports to the middle school.
Thank you. We're going to shift gears here a little bit. And the next question is going to begin with candidate Erkinswick. And it's, how should the district address bullying and ensure a safe and inclusive school environment for students and teachers?
I love this question. I think that the district should have a zero-tolerance policy on that, and then I think they should enforce it. Bullying and student-on-student violence is something that we see regularly, something we also see every so often is, you know, situations where kids feel grieved by a teacher or an adult in the building. And so I think it's really important to address this issue head-on. In terms of policies, they're already in place. We just need to enforce them. I would also just like to add that the culture of the community really speaks to this and really influences how our kids are behaving at school. So we adults, of course, need to behave like adults, treat each other with kindness, treat each other as neighbors and community members. And I think that'll translate onto our children. But I believe that issues with bullying, racism, any other type of just negative interactions would need to be handled aggressively and with firm consequences.
Candidate Gennaro.
Yes, thank you. I think that it's important that, as a board, that group makes sure that we are maintaining an inclusive and safe environment for everyone. And this includes gender, religion, color of your skin, all those things. And racism and bullying are obviously a huge part of that. But we also need to make sure when we're combating this with the students that we have teachers who feel like we're giving them the tools that they are supported to combat bias well. I think that we have an SEL program that helps cover some of this, and it's weaved into the curriculum in different ways. But there's probably always something more that we can be doing. And I think a lot of that becomes direct dial down into the classroom with what teachers are seeing, what their experiences are, et cetera.
Candidate Paver.
All right. I think that it would be very beneficial at our schools to establish chains of communication or lines of communication so that students or staff who notice maybe microaggressions or small, or seemingly small issues with interpersonal interactions or how people are treating each other so that these types of issues can be looked at before they bubble over into bigger problems with bullying and even violence in some cases. And I agree that we need to do a better job of enforcing the bullying policies that we have on the books already.
Candidate Rutledge.
The social and emotional learning aspect of our educational program is pretty much pervasive throughout our curriculum. And it's important, and I think we're making good progress with that. The goal of having every student have a meaningful relationship with a trusted adult that is measured, that is counted, kept track of. And roughly 95% of the kids report, and the teachers confirm this, that they've got a trusted relationship so that if a kid sees something, there's somebody that they can, or experiences something, there's someone they can take that problem to. And that's, I think, is part of the overall safety program that we have. I personally live right next to a grade school, and I see all kinds of kids out there doing all kinds of things together. And I have never seen even an argument, much less a fight, out there. They seem to get along so well together.
Thank you. And candidate Blatner.
Thank you. I feel strongly that every student should have a safe and comfortable learning environment, and there should be no tolerance for bullying. I do think that we should give our staff the support that they need, and that kids need to be told that something's not okay right when it happens, right when it occurs. Having said that, and I agree, we should have a no-tolerance policy for bullying, and we do, and we try hard. There's a lot of things, though, that are just really super difficult to constantly police, but we should be ever diligent. I want to throw in here a little plug for cell phones and cellphone use in school. I think so much of what occurs in the middle and high school levels in terms of bullying and social media occurs by pictures and things that are taken during the school day. And I think if we could put those away, maybe we would have less of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question will begin with candidate Gennaro.
I didn't get to answer.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I could have let it go.
I was so ready to go. Okay, sorry. Candidate Ebson.
Sorry. Yeah, so I think it's easy to say zero-tolerance policy must be enforced, but I think it's also a little bit short-sighted. You know, kids are kids. Their frontal lobes aren't developed. You're never going to eradicate kids making poor decisions. I mean, we have adults in the community who are bullies. So why are we expecting our kids to be perfect? I think it's really important to weave in the social, emotional learning throughout the day, making sure that kids have a safe adult to talk to and be connected with because I think a lot of kids bully because they are getting bullied at home, or they feel unsafe, or they're trying to act out, or they're trying to lash out or get a bid for connection or attention. And we need to meet those kids' emotional needs. We can't just say, absolutely not, you're not allowed to do that, get out of the school.
Thank you. Now I'll begin with the next question. Candidate Gennaro. What steps would you take as a board member in the hiring and retention of Black, Indigenous, or people of color whose numbers are well below those of their white counterpart teachers in Illinois?
Can you repeat the question again, please?
What steps would you take as a board member in the hiring and retention of BIPOC, which is Black Indigenous People of Color, staff whose numbers are well below those of their white counterparts teachers?
Well, first and foremost, if there's a retention issue with any area of who we hire, I think we need to really look at that and explore why. What things could we be doing differently? Is there something that makes us not attractive to particular people? Also, when it comes down to the hiring, there's various opportunities at universities and other areas that we can go and be setting up recruitment tables. I think networking out to specific communities that we're looking to fill a void in is important. I also think that we need to make sure that our staff is very reflective of who is in our district. So regardless of what ethnicity that would be, if there's a void anywhere, we don't want to be leaving students feeling like there's no one for me at this school, at this district, in this environment. So overall, I think that is very important to pay attention to. And if we do have a particular group we're having hiring problems with or retention, then absolutely figure out why and what the next step would be to fix that.
Candidate Paver.
I agree that it's especially important to look at retention because that is a huge red flag. I also agree that it is important to recruit from, or it is important to go out to areas where the populations that you hope to apply to your school or for your positions would be. So to go out and actively recruit members of diverse communities. And what I, another thing that I would add is that I think that the program, the pathways program that we have in our district to encourage students to go become educators and then come back to our community is a great way to get our pool of educators to reflect the diversity of our students.
Candidate Rutledge, the same question.
One of the difficulties that we face is that students go off to college and tend to return home. And so we can generally look at an applicant pool here that reflects here. If we were to go, for example, to the South to try to recruit, we're going to have a very difficult time getting the college graduates there to come here. So we do have to look at our applicant pool and where they're coming from. And yeah, I'd like to see more diversity in our teacher population. We can't hire people that don't apply. And there's a limit to our ability to attract people to come here from other areas.
Thank you.
The idea of encouraging our own students to become teachers is important, and I think we'll have some success with that.
Candidate Blatner.
Thank you. While we can all agree that diversity is something that we strive for and would like, I think we can define diversity outside of just the color of someone's skin. We want to attract diverse staff and diversity of thought, diversity in education, as well as diversity of culture. And in doing that, I want to say that a student can learn from someone of a different culture, of a different race. It's more important that the teachers who come to us and who work for us are trained and learning to create a relatable environment for that student. We do seek out diversity according to skin color and other qualifications. However, when it comes down to hiring, we should always, regardless of skin color, gender, we should hire the best candidate who's going to provide the best education for our students.
Candidate Ebson.
So I think the district does place an importance on diversity and equity and inclusion in their hiring process. And I would be supportive of the continuation and the enhancement of these efforts. The school board doesn't do any hiring or firing of personnel. We only hire the superintendent. So I, you know, as far as what the role of the board member in that would be, would be to, you know, look at the policies that we could put in place, you know, maybe making changes in work environments to get diverse applicants to apply or to retain them. I think it's important for kids. We have a very diverse student body. And I think it's important for kids to go to school and see people that look like them from their culture. You know, having a kindergartner go to school and their kindergartner teacher looks like them, I think, gives them some confidence and some encouragement that like, hey, this person who's my teacher is a teacher, and she looks like me, I can be a teacher one day, too. So I think it is important to strategize these efforts and continue to try to do as best as we can.
Thank you. Candidate Erkinswick.
Thank you. I identify immensely with everything that Angela said, to be honest with you. Obviously, our educators should reflect our community. We should absolutely be doing active and purposeful recruiting from communities that we have interest in recruiting from. But additionally, of course, merit and skill are hugely important because to have the best students, you have to have the best educators. So I would, again, echo everything Angela said, but add those couple of pieces. In terms of retention, this question has come up before, and I learned something that specifically the Hispanic educator population in our district has a retention rate of only 37%. So as a Board of Education member, it's not necessarily my job to fix that necessarily, but certainly to ask questions for understanding, certainly to dig in and see why it is that those Hispanic educators might not be considering this district as ideal, and to work towards making sure that they feel welcome and included.
Thank you. Well, shifting gears once again, we're going to talk a little bit about money. So the question is this. Voters recently passed a referendum, excuse me, for improvements at three of the four district middle schools. Did you support this referendum? If so, why? If not, why not? And we'll begin with candidate Paver.
This question is great. Yes. So I supported it with an asterisk, I would say. I see the very urgent need at our middle schools to make improvements and to make them quickly. I am a little bit concerned, or I've had concerns that throughout the process, I tried asking questions, like when they did the phone calls, when they did the in-person meet and greets about what kind of planning went in to the future of special education. I am concerned about making Monroe the North Side hub for special education because most of the students in instructional programs that are currently educated in Monroe don't come from elementary schools that feed into Monroe.
Thank you. Candidate Rutledge.
Yes, absolutely. I supported it. We need to maintain the physical plant that we have that's been given to us by previous generations. These buildings have not been neglected. There is not an issue of deferred maintenance. But there's only so many times you can sand and refinish a floor until there's no floor left to sand. A science lab that's half the size that it needs to be is obsolete in today's educational setting. So there were things that needed to be done. My son said Edison was just fine. Yeah, he was there 40 years ago. We need to have today's schools for today's kids. And I'm very encouraged that the community voted 68% to get this work done so that we can pass on to the next generation buildings that have been thoroughly updated. Thank you.
Candidate Blatner.
Thank you. I will agree with John in everything he said so eloquently. I will say, so in August of 2022 was the first time the plans came to the board, the initial discussions. And I was very skeptical. It seemed like a lot of money. I didn't understand the scope of the situation. And we did a nice job of educating ourselves, visiting the buildings, seeing what needed to be done and how far away we were from this century learning that we needed to get to. I kept, at that August 2022 meeting, I kept thinking to myself, it's always easier to spend someone else's money. I don't want to be that board member who's thinking, it's easy to spend money, let's just keep spending. But honestly, we need these facilities, and I'm ecstatic that the community voted in favor of them.
Candidate Ebson.
I wholeheartedly supported the referendum, no asterisks. I, you know, and coming from Warrenville, our home school is Hubble. So when I first heard of the referendum, I thought, Hubble looks amazing. Why do we need these improvements for these middle schools? And then in talking to community members and visiting Franklin and Monroe and Edison, you know, they really do needed work. And I've heard from a lot of the older generation Wheaton folk who said, oh, it hasn't, you know, Franklin hasn't changed since I went there in the 80s. And that's kind of a problem. So I am very encouraged by our 68% vote in favor of the referendum. And I'm excited to oversee the projects in the next two to three years and ensure that our tax dollars are not wasted and are spent appropriately. But ultimately, I think referendum was good, a good thing.
Candidate Erkinswick.
Thank you. I absolutely support the updating of the three middle schools. I question the fiscal responsibility in being in continuous state of referendum for over 20 years. We are, as a district, double-dipping into the pockets of our 31% low-income population here. I know Mr. Rutledge said something along the lines of this wasn't deferred maintenance, but in a recent conversation that we were both part of, it was stated that these projects for maintenance were put off because of the master facilities plan. So I would actually argue that these projects were deferred. And I don't know that I believe that it's fiscally responsible to continuously ask for additional money from district taxpayers who are already taxed at the absolute highest possible tax rate based off of CPI.
May I rebut?
I'm sorry. But in your closing statement, you can add any comments that you'd like. Candidate Gennaro.
Thank you. One of the things I always hear about the referendum is how it was passed by over 60-something percent. Voter turnout for that was less than 30,000 people in a town of roughly 70,000. I think a lot of people were confused about a few things that were going on there. For me, myself, as I mentioned earlier, Hubble, our newest building, we have a 34% proficiency rate in math. That's actually down in '24 compared to '23. So I was hoping that we were also going to get some reassurance that we'd be getting more support staff, looking at classroom sizes, other things that would be improving these schools. Safety, which is one of my other big issues we haven't talked about yet. When you look at these schools, think about what's actually inside of them, safety-wise. It's not much. Compared to our comparatives, it's certainly not. Something as simple and inexpensive is self-locking doors, which has proven there's never been an intruder who's invaded a classroom with a locked door. They didn't build into the plan. And you've got to wonder why because I'm not a Dollar General shopper when it comes to safety. I was really hoping that we were going to see much more for that.
Thank you. The next question is, what is your strategy for how to incorporate community input regarding the budget while also recognizing the professional expertise of the administrators in the district? And we'll begin with candidate Rutledge.
We have an excellent staff in terms We have an excellent staff in terms of the financing and the management of contracts for transportation and food service and the other things that we have to contract for. We've had a very good credit rating for many years, balanced budget as we're required to have, but we've got good reserves, and I'm comfortable with that. In terms of the budget, yes, we have increased the levy each year. And if, there's that thing about if you don't increase it, you've given it up forever. And when, we're capped at 5%. When the inflation rate gets to 7%, it's hard to pay teachers who have to buy their eggs and bread the same place I do. So my view is that we have to go to the taxpayers to fund the schools efficiently, which I believe we are, and we have to maintain our good educational system here.
Thank you. Candidate Blatner?
Thank you. I will echo Mr. Rutledge again. The budget is a very intense process. There's a lot of moving parts in creating it, and there's a lot of oversight that the board does have during those moving parts. I've learned a lot about budgeting over the last four years, and I have been very impressed with how our district is handling it. Thank you.
Candidate Ebbison?
Can you please repeat the question?
What is your strategy for how to incorporate community input regarding the budget while also recognizing the professional expertise of the administrators in the district?
So the budget is a complex thing. I think throughout the entire year, there is something having to do with a budget that the board needs to evaluate or vote on or oversee. It's not a simple, you know, this is the day we approve the budget, let's all look at it and vote on it. It's a whole year process. In terms of community feedback on the budget, I don't know, and I would defer to the current board members, I don't know that there usually is that much, but there certainly is a mechanism to communicate with the board, which I think could probably be improved. But ultimately, we have great people in charge of our finances. Assistant Superintendent Dr. O'Keefe, I've had multiple conversations with him about the budgets, where his eyes just get fiery, and he's so passionate about finances and the budget, and he's so smart, and he can explain things in such a great way. And I know, as his eyes are lighting up in passion, that we have the right person, you know, leading the charge when it comes to that. So I would defer to our experts rather than community feedback for that.
Candidate Erkinswick?
Thank you. I know that community input and engagement around something like the budget is actually tremendously low. I think what would help engage the community in discussions of that nature would be to ensure that the Board of Education is meeting their communication needs elsewhere. I think if community members felt like when they asked a question or they inquired about something, that they got a meaningful dialogue back, I think they would be more apt to engage in some of the sort of less controversial type situations. In terms of recognizing the experts, of course, absolutely, that's why we have, you know, a business office and finance managers, et cetera. But of course, as we all know, sometimes experts can be wrong as well. So it's important to make sure that the community feels like they can always have a voice, and they can always make, you know, feel heard by the Board of Education and district administration.
Thank you. Candidate Gennaro?
Thank you. As others have commented, we have people in place to really help get some of that nitty-gritty budgeting figured out. I think that it would probably be helpful to the community if we found a new way to present some of that information. It's something that can be incredibly overwhelming, and most people don't have enough time in the day to really try to tap into that and figure out things, which then prevents them from asking questions. Something we've never done is an operating cost increase referendum. We're really good at other referendums, but not one of those. What that would do is it would give us some feedback from the community. That kind of a referendum would allocate funds directly to staffing and some of the other things that I've talked about earlier, and we wouldn't be able to dump it into buildings, which, not that we're dumping it now, but we're putting it there, and we're not putting it other places. And I think that if the community approved a referendum like that, then that would be them giving us feedback that it's time to explore that.
Thank you. Candidate Paver?
All right. Well, I feel like this question has been tackled incredibly well by the candidates who came before me. I guess one thing I could add is, I think one way to include community input regarding the budget is for board members to act as a megaphone and ask questions that they know that the community is interested in. I agree that the budget presentations are kind of hard to understand sometimes, stacked bar graphs, and especially with the comparables to different districts, different districts label things different ways. I would also say that as a community member, I feel like referendums are holding our schools hostage to a certain extent. So I guess from my perspective, I would rather elect board members that are held responsible to the community instead of maybe continuously coming forward with the referendums.
Well, thank you all. That was our last question. I have a stack here of questions we didn't get to. And for those who asked those questions, I hope you'll reach out to the candidates to answer those questions for you before April 1st. So please join me now in thanking the candidates for being here tonight. I do want to give each and every one of you a chance for a closing statement. Excuse me, and we'll begin with candidate Blatner. You have one minute for a closing statement.
Thank you. I just want to reiterate that the driving force of why I serve on the board and that I am running for reelection is to work toward providing every single student in our district with a successful academic and school experience. Our district has accomplished a lot over the past four years. However, I will always remain reluctant to pat myself on the back for the accomplishments of the board and the district for the following two reasons. First, as a board member, I'm not in the trenches doing the hard work that's done by our teachers, our staff, our administration, our students, and our parents. Second, I cannot pat myself on the back until I am confident that every single one of the district's 11,493 students is successful and that there's not one student slipping through the cracks. The thought of students slipping through the cracks is what keeps me up at night. If I can pat myself on the back, that would mean that every single student in our district is successful and flourishing, and my work would be done. Thank you.
Candidate Ebbison? You have one minute in closing statement.
So first and foremost, I'm running for school board because I love this community, and I want to serve this community with my background, my skills, and experience. I think I have a really unique perspective to bring. I am excited to represent Warrenville, and I also, you know, my four kids are spaced such that if I get elected to the board, I'll have a high school student, a middle school student, an elementary school student, and a preschooler all at the same time. So it makes me sound really busy, and I am, but it gives me a unique perspective and the ability to be plugged into every level of the system. You know, professionally, I'm an attorney. I'm used to being collaborative and working with multiple parties to get things done. And I understand the role of a board member is to balance the interests of our community members. Sometimes they're competing interests, and it's important to have somebody represent the community who is even-keeled and measured and dedicated to doing the hard work that it takes to govern a school district like this. And I believe that I'm the best person for this job.
Thank you. Candidate Erkinswick?
Thank you so much. I just want to close by saying that this community that we all call home has a choice to make this election season. We can choose incumbent, handpicked, establishment slated, systematically and organizationally cultivated, status quo successor candidates, or we can choose public servants that truly represent the diverse voices and perspectives of this community that we all call home. If I'm elected, I pledge to uphold a commitment to all community members, free from allegiance to any group, individual, or organization. I promise to be accessible, communicative, and transparent within the rules bounds, and to bridge the gap between the community and the Board of Education.
Candidate Gennaro?
Thank you. Voters, your participation in school board elections has a profound impact on quality of education as well as quality of life in our community. Vote for me if you believe that keeping our students safe while providing an excellent education is of top priority. Vote for me if you think socioeconomic status is not an excuse for declining academics. Vote for me that if something is broken, we should be fixing it. That is something I try to instill in my child, and I am trying to exemplify by running for a seat on the board. Vote for me if checks and balances are essential tools in holding administration. That does not make you educator or teacher, anti educator or anti teacher. Do not vote for me if you believe a healthy board consists of only like-minded, union-backed individuals. Do not vote for me if having leaders that do not understand Open Meetings Act have been found in violation of Open Meetings Act, and multiple board members failing to fulfill their roles mandated reporters is acceptable to you. Do not vote for me if Wheaton Warrenville South dropping from 45% in 2023 in English Language Arts to 41% in 2024 sounds good to you.
Thank you. Candidate Paver?
All right. Well, thank you all for your kind attention. I have seen this district through the eyes of a student and a parent. I've sat in advanced classes and IEP meetings. The middle school improvements will have a direct impact on my children. As a parent whose child has been on the wrong end of when you know better, you do better, I recognize the threat of the status quo. We need a vision that includes all of our learners. I bring the perspective of a scientist. I learn new things quickly, think logically, and problem solve creatively. I take pride in my ability to change my position when presented with new information. I am prepared to thoughtfully engage with your concerns, to support our teachers, to advocate for the needs of every student, and to collaborate with our administrators while holding them accountable to our community. My name is Sarah Paver. I'm last on the ballot, and I would be honored to serve you on the Board of Education.
And candidate Rutledge?
Yes, thank you to the League for having us here, to my fellow candidates for participating tonight, and thank you for being here tonight. I'm going to pretty much throw out my comments here, because I want to mention two or three things. One is that the budget is published and is available for everyone to look at, and there is a hearing, which no one ever shows up for, to discuss. As to deferred maintenance on the middle schools, it doesn't make sense to paint a wall that you're going to move in a year or two. And as to the high schools and scores and so forth, the state grades our schools across the state, and 10% of the schools are rated exemplary. The last time around, both of our high schools were rated exemplary, as well as four of our middle schools. That's 30% of our schools, 10% across the state, but 30% of ours are rated exemplary. It's been a privilege to serve the last two years, and I hope you would give me an opportunity to continue. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our democracy thrives when all of us are engaged. Attending or watching a candidate forum is an excellent way to be empowered to join discussions on local issues and make your voices heard on Election Day. We hope that each and every one of you will vote and inspire your family and friends and neighbors to do the same. Information on how and when to vote can be found on the website vote411.org or on the Wheaton League of Women Voters website. We would like to thank, give extreme thanks to the City of Wheaton for their generosity and use of the council chambers, and you will find a recording of this forum on the Wheaton Public Access Channel 17 and on the League of Women Voters website. So to the candidates, best of luck on the campaign trail, and thank you again for participating tonight.
Thank you.